Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call this Region 12 meeting to order. It is 7:01. Please take attendance.
Joe Abdella.
Here.
Greg Kava.
Here.
Vicky Salon.
Stephanie Coleman.
Angela Maciullough. Alex McNaughton. Justin Angley here. Jennifer Poty.
Here.
Jane Sargent. Pete Tagley. Mary Weber. And Christine Waiters.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. The minutes of October... Oh, thank you. Pabas, thank you. Public comments first on agenda items only. Is there anybody who would like to say anything? No? Now we'll move on. The minutes of the Board of Ed meeting for October 7th. Does anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda? Hearing nothing? Okay, we can move on. Moving on to our first presentation tonight. Tyler Clemens here for the FFA Agri-science Capstone Presentation. Welcome, Tyler.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. Just going to give a quick introduction here and our students are actually going to be doing most of the talking tonight. But for those of you who don't know, our SE Capstone course is an advanced hands-on program designed specifically for agri-science students that meets the mastery-based learning requirement here at Chappag. By allowing students to focus on their chosen agricultural fields, it emphasizes the real-world skills and experience they gained this summer during their SEs. The Capstone experience is ideal for students seeking a deeper, more personalized learning experience in agri-science. It provides a unique opportunity for them to apply their knowledge in practical settings, reflect on their summer projects, and showcase their skills and achievements, making it an excellent opportunity for students to prepare for future studies or careers in the agricultural sciences. The projects that you'll see tonight range widely from entrepreneurship ventures and volunteer work to experiences abroad and initiatives aimed at feeding our communities. These are meaningful project-based learning experiences that not only foster personal growth, but contribute to the larger goal of sustaining and supporting our world. I'd like to encourage Board members tonight to take a moment to connect with our students and ask them about their projects. Your insights and experiences reflect the importance of their work and the meaningful impact these students are making in our communities. And if you guys... I would love to answer questions, whether that's before this or after this, wherever you guys think is an appropriate time. But if there are any questions, I'd love to answer those tonight, too. But that was my introduction. And if there are none, I would love for you guys to meet the students and see their work.
That'd be great. Do we have any questions before we move on? Are you going to ask anything? Okay, so now we're going to take a recess so we can come and visit each of you. As much as I hate to end this, and I really do. We have to move on, but I just have to say how utterly impressed I am with all of you. Really incredible, not only just about your projects, but how you are engaging all of us by talking about your projects. It's really been incredible, so I'm super proud of all of you. So thank you so much for coming and sharing with us tonight. And you should all be really proud of yourselves as well because it's not easy to have to get up here in front of a bunch of boring adults to share your incredibly interesting projects. So thank you so much. I'm not really boring. I'm just trying to... I'm anything, but not boring. Okay. So, moving on. It's my turn for the board report. First of all, I just want to give a shout out to Ben Allen. You have not yet gotten your picture taken tonight. We are all getting our pictures taken tonight so we can update the photos on our website. I know, I know. And I have in writing that Ben is going to make us all look younger, so... Yep, totally. For sure. So thank you, Ben, for doing that. Yes, he has. Wood filter, yes. But it's going to be natural looking, of course. Yes, that's very important. Yes, thanks, Ben. That's it. I know Mr. Parachi is here tonight to present this evening on the Chappag Fall Teams. I just have to say that fall is my favorite time of year to be on campus, and I love coming to all the events after school. I have not been to the football because they're not there, but you just work with me on that one because it's not here. But I do live halfway down the street, so I love coming here. And I went to the field hockey game for the first time a few weeks ago to see one of the senior projects. And you had soccer going on and the cross-country. And it's just, campus is alive up here, and it's just really kind of incredible. And I think the nice weather helps, too. So I just wanted to share that. There's just so much energy among the students and the spectators, and so I just, it's contagious. So I look forward to Matt's report later. Also, I spoke with Cabe and NASDAQ, and I've secured two options for dates in November for the search firms for us to interview. The 19th or the 21st. I'll be reaching out to each of you individually just to see and take a head count. Obviously, attendance is really important, but we really need to get ourselves going on this. So I want to get on the calendar as soon as possible. So I will be reaching out to you all this week. And if anybody feels strongly about inviting CES, please let me know. I didn't... We talked about it at the last meeting, but if there's somebody that feels strongly about inviting them as part of our inviting them to interview, I will do so, but I've only invited the two. So if somebody feels differently, please let me know. Otherwise, we'll just stick with the two. And then lastly, Lori and I worked on a letter this week that we're going to share with the three first selectmen about the elementary school committee. And hopefully, we'll be mailing it this week. Tentatively scheduled for the November 14th will be our first meeting. I will reach out to the appointed Board members this week also to let them know. And we're looking forward to moving forward with that. So that's it for me. Short and sweet. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Our teachers conducted conferences, as you know, last week across the district. That was Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And I have to say, overall, feedback was genuinely positive. And, you know, I know it's important to our parents. We typically find it very valuable, useful to meet directly with students, teachers, especially this early in the year. And I know I mentioned this in my Sunday highlights, but conferences also help in getting parents to support educational efforts at home. So that was a good... We had a good week. We have another professional development day coming up on Friday, November 1st. And Carrie Snowden has worked with staff and leaders to focus specifically on our district goals again this year, connected to our strategic plan. Teachers will work on instructional strategies, things like checking for understanding and learning targets, things that we've talked about since the summer, as well as our new reading program, ARC. Schools are closed to students, which works out for families as it follows Halloween evening. So good for teachers as well. This evening, we have two presentations. The first focuses on our agri-science capstone. We already had that. And I also want to say just how amazing... I mean, those were eight students, and there are so many more in that program. I just thought I'd mention that. It, you know, these are some of the projects, but if you see their work on a daily basis, you understand what that culmination is and how they got there. They're just really, really hard-working students, and we see that in the program as it grows every day and each year. And of course, Matt Parachi, you've already mentioned that, is here to update us on our athletic program and early successes in many of our teams. And I know you probably read about that in the media already, but it'll be nice to hear some of the updates from Matt. Our Western Connecticut Superintendent's Group brought together some high school principals, some SROs and our athletic directors to attend a workshop on emergency preparedness for threats, imminent threats, and swatting incidents that occur after hours, especially during activities and sporting events, things that we're less prepared for at times. And I think I mentioned to you in an email that other districts have already experienced some of those. And we came together, I brought Don Shels with me and Matt Parachi, and we came together, all of the districts in this area, to talk about the ways we could prepare ourselves better. If you think about it, you'll have coaches, you know, during after-hours, you might have a coach who has no familiarity with our emergency plans or where to go if there is a problem, who to call, who to communicate with. So it puts us at, anyone at a disadvantage. And so we talked about, we've already started putting together plans so that we can share plans across districts in cell phone numbers, communication-wise, so that if something should happen in the form of an emergency, there's actually a plan in place for after-school and events like that. So it was a really good dialogue, as I'm sure you might hear from Matt this evening and Don. But we're hopeful that that will help because we're always prepared for the daytime, but not a week after hours. And that's all I have this evening. Oh, I'm sorry. It's not all I have this evening. So we have some appointments. Julie Frank, the Agri-science Operations Assistant, who will be working weekdays. We have Peyton Graham, the Agri-science Operations Assistant, who will be working weekdays. Both will also be flexible to help out on the weekends as well. We have some resignations and retirements. Tim Brown, Maintenance and Grounds, that's already happened effective October 18th. Nancy Meyer, retiring. She's the head custodian at Burnham. That's effective November 4th. Doug Reece, the building sub at Chappag, and that was effective October 4th. And field trips. So we have the Eastern... These are just field trips that we notify you, just so you know. There's no approval of any kind needed because it exceeds the mileage. So Eastern State's Equine Coliseum, they're going to West Springfield, Mass. on November 8th for clinics and workshops, and that involves 14 students in grades 11 and 12. And then the UConn Stores trip on November 1st, grades 9 through 12. That's 24 students. And that is for career and development and leadership. And then UConn in Mansfield on November 25th. That's grades 10 through 12, and that's 14 students, and that's an FFA Leadership Workshop.
Moving on to the treasures report, Alex.
I have nothing to report on the treasures. Nicole informs me that things are running smoothly, and I have no report. I'll have some stuff on FNO.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports, Agri-science Committee, Mary. You need a microphone.
Finally had our first meeting on the 21st, and we found that, what we did was, we discussed the last Agri-science Advisory Committee meeting. And we talked about how everything went so well at that meeting, especially to the one before that that I had brought to. And what they did is Tyler and all the teachers told us about what they've done so far and what they want to do, what they plan to do in the future. We've also asked Tim Ambrooster, who's the chair, to possibly, if he can, get all the towns represented in that committee, not just our three towns. And it's worked so far. He's gotten a few more people, but it's hard to get people from some of the other towns. I guess they're busy. We want to be sure that all the checks and balances are in place for the Agri-science Academy. And, oh, there was a concern that they weren't doing enough fundraising, but I've seen lately that there's been a lot of fundraising going on. I was at the Harvest Festival. Washington gave them the prime location, and they had a huge display. They had many flowers there for shale, centerpieces, and some of the other things to decorate their yard. So they're selling a lot of different things. By the end of the night, a lot of the things were gone. So it was great. So they are working on that. And there's so, there's so many activities and events that are going on that I find it very exciting, and I hope the students do, too. And as you see tonight, they seem to be, they seem to be very interested in what they're doing. So that's it.
Thank you, Mary.
Can I just use this opportunity? So I was supposed to be at the meeting. I was traveling for work. Is there a way that we can have Zoom links even for committee meetings? Because that wasn't really an option to join remotely. Is that possible?
I mean, I'm sure we can figure that out. Absolutely.
Great.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just let me know, and we can, let me know if you can't attend, and somehow we'll figure out how we can get a Zoom link for you. Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks. That's great.
Okay, Curriculum and Education, Justin.
So we just had a meeting at 6 o'clock tonight, and we spent a lot of time talking about the new reading program, the ARC program. And Carrie Snowden kind of just filled us in. Some of the highlights are Unit 1 is just about done in every grade at every school. It seems to be going very smoothly. They've already had three professional development days with ARC staff, helping, you know, large groups, small groups, and then individual teachers, like really learn the ins and outs of the programs. One of the things that we talked about was how, I guess it seems like a little bit better, or the students seem to be doing better this year with this new program. Erla? Erla? I R L A. Is that so important? So there's, it's IR, something reading, educational reading learning assessment. But it's doing a very good job of catching gaps that where, you know, where the students are deficient. And then there's also built into the program are places that target those areas of weakness so that students can do better. But overall, it seems to be working out really well. We have a Spanish teacher. Their first day was October 7th, and they are off to a running start. Elementary? Yeah. And then we ended by talking a little bit more about how the district uses Linkit, which is the data clearinghouse thing or place to make decisions based on student growth and assignments and things like that.
Thank you, Justin. At Advance, Joe?
Nothing to report. Our next meeting is November.
Thank you. Finance and Operations?
Yes, our last meeting was October 7th, and Nicole went over the numbers. And happy to say there are no surprises. If you remember, at the end of last school year, we had a lot of encumbrances still. It had to be worked out. The encumbrances now are down to about 75,000. And that was as of the 7th, so they may even be down further now. The other good side of it is the surplus, which was, I believe, 16,000, is now up to 80,000. So we are 80,000 under budget for last year. We reviewed the enrollment numbers, which I believe you've all seen at the different schools. We discussed the vestibule situation at the three elementary schools, and we are recommending that we authorize $90,875 to do all three. And I don't remember whether we brought this before the board last meeting and was approved or not. We did. Okay, so... And the really strange thing is this new electrical panel, and it boots free. Because of the size of the panel, we're going to need a large transformer outside the building. And the question is where we can put it so that we don't obstruct traffic to the back of the school, et cetera. And Don is going to work with the Roxbury zoning people to find out what requirements, how close we can go to property lines, and just general rules that might apply to us. We also discussed tuition in, and after much review and discussion, the FNO committee is going to recommend to this committee that we increase tuition in by 3% per year, starting '25, '26. But we're not asking for a vote on that tonight. That will be on the agenda next Monday, and we should all think about it and discuss it. I will not physically be here that weekend, I'm afraid. And that is it.
Thank you. Alex, Labor Negotiations, Greg?
We have scheduled meetings with the Chappag Valley Administrators Association. We've commenced negotiations in November.
Thank you. Policy, Justin?
Nothing new. Our next meeting, I think, is December 9th.
9th, 8th?
It's in December.
It's in December, early December. Yeah. Thank you. And Strategic Long Range Plan, we are meeting on November 4th, so nothing to report. Old business, there's nothing. Moving on to new business. Athletic Program Update, Mr. Parachi.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for allowing me this opportunity to report to you about Chappag's fall athletic programs. To date, we've had a successful season with many honors and accomplishments for our teams and individual student athletes. And hopefully, there'll be more of both to come before the end of the season. During this fall season, we had 132 high school students registered to participate in athletics. And in middle school, we had 64. The middle school fall athletic season will wrap up this week. The soccer and field hockey teams playing their final contests in the coming days. And the middle school cross-country team will be competing in the state championship meet on Saturday. The high school regular season for all sports except football has ended, and teams are in our league tournaments, as well as CIAC state tournaments, and the New England Championships as well. The golf team had a tremendous season this year. For their third consecutive season, they were crowned virtual league champions. During the previous two seasons, they shared the championship with Lithgow High School, but this year, the golf team was crowned the outright sole winner of the virtual league championship. At the virtual league golf tournament, Chappag swept the awards, winning the team competition. And Chappag senior Gavin Giraud won medalist honors for shooting the best score of the day. Three of the five virtual league golf All-Stars were from Chappag. They were Gavin Giraud, Peyton Thomas, and Miles Wilson. After qualifying for the state championship tournament in the last week of the regular season, and for a small school like Chappag to qualify for the golf state tournament, it's very hard. And so we qualified for it right at the end of the season. And the team, at the state championship, the team collectively, they had the round of their lives in the tournament. They came within three strokes of being state champions, and they were recognized as the state championship runners-up, which by far is the highest finish for any Chappag golf team. Gavin Giraud shot a 71, which tied him for second place overall as an individual. Because of that performance, he earned a spot in today's New England Championship Tournament, which they had at Mohegan, it was in Connecticut this year. It was at Mohegan Sun Golf Course. He shot an even par 71 today, which left him tied for the third-best score of the day, which in the field of the 72 best high school golfers in New England, it's pretty good. And in addition, mostly based upon his regular season and his performance in the Connecticut State Championship, Gavin was named All-State Involved. Yep. On to field hockey. The Chappag Field Hockey Team also had a great season, which is not over yet. They captured the regular season virtual league championship for the second consecutive year. Three of the girls on the team were recognized as first-team virtual league All-Stars. They are Claire Moore, Juliette Eddy, and Lily Byalak. This past Friday, the Spartans beat the Lakeview Bobcats 3 to 0. That was the virtual league tournament semifinals here at Chappag. They are now going to play in the championship game this Wednesday, 6:00 PM at Nanawog High School. They're going to play against Watertown. The team is also going to play in the upcoming CIAC tournament. We anticipate they're probably going to be on the road despite their great season because of the way they seed field hockey teams. It's a little different than other teams. They probably are not going to have a home game. We'll find out tomorrow what the CIAC tournament parents are. So they still have, they still have some games to play, and hopefully, a second virtual league championship to win tomorrow, Wednesday night. Boys Soccer, they also won the virtual league regular season championship this season. It was their second consecutive title for them after they won it last fall. During this season, Chappag senior Rocco Smith broke the Chappag career scoring record that had been set back in 1986. On top of that, after he scored his ninth, or upon scoring his 93rd career goal on October 10th at a game at Gilbert, he broke the all-time virtual league scoring record that had been in place since 2020. This season, we had three players recognized as first-team virtual league All-Stars, the Rocco Smith, Drew Konig, and James Kirsten. This past Friday, here at Chappag, the Spartans beat the Houston Mountaineers, also five-score, 3 to 0, in the virtual league tournament semifinals. They are going to play in the virtual league tournament championship game tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at Nanawog High School against Nanawog. They're also going to be playing in the upcoming CIAC tournament, and right now, they are ranked number one in Class S, and I don't believe there's any way that that can change. And because of that high ranking and the number of teams that have qualified for the tournament, we anticipate they're going to have a first-round bye, and they will be playing at home next Tuesday. We'll find that out for certain tomorrow. Onto football. The Northwest United Football Co-op Team, which I think most of us know, but I'll just educate people who don't, consists of players from Nanawog, Willcat Tech, Lakeview, and Chappag High Schools. And they compete in the Connecticut Technical Conference. They've had a very successful season so far to date. And from Chappag, we have six players on the team. Seniors Reed Warner and Luke Nichols, juniors Ryan Salon and Kurt Warner, and freshman Dan Nichols and Noe Kahada are Chappag's representatives on the Northwest United Workhorse. As I'm sure a lot of you know, maybe some of you don't, the football season goes way longer than everything else. So everyone else is in league tournaments and state tournaments and New England tournaments. Football doesn't even, we have our last regular season game the day before Thanksgiving, which is November 27th. They still have four regular season games left. They're going to play a big league rival, ATI, and that stands for Abtech Immaculate. It's a co-op team like us. Right now, Northwest United is on top of the CTC standards. They're 6-0, they're unbeaten, vying for a league title this year, and they're hoping that they're going to get their third straight berth in the CIAC tournament. That's all remains to be seen, but when you're 6-0, you can't really have done too much better than that. So they're in a good spot right now. Cross-country, both the boys and girls cross-country teams had successful seasons. And one of the great things about that is looking at the success they've had of the 37 runners... of the thirty-seven runners on, uh, both teams. Twenty-one of them are in grade nine or ten. So that means that hopefully we can maintain some of the success for years to come. Uh, at the virtual league championship, uh, well, in the, in the virtual league, actually. The girls were this, were in, uh, second place, um, and the boys were in fourth place. Um, at the championship meet, three of our runners earned virtual league all-star status. Uh, for the girls, we had Lily Cassini and Vienna Carew. For the boys, Tommy Dorman was recognized as a virtual league all-star. This past Saturday at Wickham Park in Manchester, we had the class S championship meet. Chappagh girls, uh, performed very impressively. They finished in third place in the state. And, uh, freshman Lily Cassini finished in sixth place overall, which, uh, earned her all-state status. Which is, yeah, that's, that's great for, uh, freshmen. It's great for any high school kid, but, uh, for freshmen, it's even better. Because of that performance, she qualified for the CIAC state open. I don't, I'll just explain, maybe all of you guys know this, but we have the class meets, the class S meet, are all the small schools in Connecticut in, in cross-country. They have S, double S, M, double M, L, double L. And, uh, they have a state open, uh, championship meet. Uh, the top twelve in each class compete in the state open. Uh, Lily, with, uh, her performance, um, she, uh, earned a spot in the state open meet. So she'll be competing there on Thursday. Uh, onto girls soccer. Girl soccer was in a rebuilding mode this season. Um, they certainly had some bright, bright spots. They had some, uh, some close games. They, they also, uh, had some struggles. They did not earn a win this year. Um, but the future's looking bright. Uh, the middle school girls soccer team, uh, has had a very successful season. They wrapped it up today. They had eight wins this year. They have seven eighth graders, uh, on that team. And, uh, with only three seniors graduating, you know, I'll, I'll just, uh, name three seniors. Emma Oldwire, Peyton Miles, and Krista Rickmers. We're looking, uh, at what we hope to be a bright future for girls soccer, uh, with a really talented group, uh, coming up there next year. Um, I talked about postseason honors. Um, just wanted to mention, all-state teams for soccer and field hockey haven't been announced. When they are, we really hope and expect we're going to see some Chappagh names on that list. I talked about football. How football has a much longer, uh, season. We don't have any all-league, uh, results or votes, uh, for football or, or all-state. But when the season's all said and done, uh, we hope and expect to see some of our boys' names on, uh, that list for football. One last thing I want to mention about fall sports. One of the most important relationships that any athletic program has is with their bus company. As many of you know, longtime Region Twelve All-Star Transportation Bus Manager Pam Newton retired this past summer. She was replaced by her longtime assistant Pam Brennan. I've worked with several bus managers over the years, based upon my experiences. When I found out Pam was going to retire, I was extremely worried and nervous. Um, that's not because I didn't trust Pam Brennan, but it, it, it's a complicated job. Pam was the best of the best. And a complicated job has gotten harder ever since, oh, the shortage of bus drivers. And Pam's just a tough act to follow, so I was really worried about it. But I, when I was talking about fall sports, I really wanted to be sure that I mentioned that we've had a really good transition. And our experience so far this fall has been very positive. Despite the fact we have a shortage of drivers, Pam Brennan has really gone out of her way to make sure all of our trips are covered. We've had to work together. We've had to get creative on some days to get everything covered. But despite the transition, we, we are receiving the same level of service that we always have. And that's the most important thing, and, and that's something that I wanted to make sure that I said publicly here. Uh, I wanted to thank the board for the opportunity to provide this update. And I hope to see some of you on the sidelines, uh, in our upcoming games. I don't know if there's anything else, if anyone has questions, uh, Alex?
Yeah, um, could you talk a little bit about next year's football program and what options we have?
Well, so, um, you know, there's a lot up in the air, and there's, there's a lot that, um, I'm not sure it's really something I should say in a public meeting. Plenty I would be happy to share with people, not in front of a mic, you know, uh, you know, on Zoom in front of people. But where we are right now, what I, what I can say is this. The league that we're competing in, Connecticut Technical Conference, has made it pretty clear that, um, the North, Northwest United, uh, because of the composition, because of whatever reason, we can speculate on a bunch of different things, uh, it's not going to be in that league next year. Also, the CIAC, based on the numbers on the team. Now, one, one of the things you have to, um, understand about a co-op team is you're allowed to put together a co-op team when there's a shortage of players and schools on their own couldn't possibly build their own team. There is a number that they say, once you get to this number, you can't continue to band together. It's too many. You have to start to build your own teams. And based on the number of participants, a- and when you enter a co-op, uh, program, you're, you, you have an agreement with the CIAC. When the maximum length of a co-op agreement is two years. So there's, there's a bunch of different ways that co-ops can work. It can be approved. The typical, probably default way is you get a two-year agreement, and then at the end of two years, you have to reapply. We've had hockey here, the hockey co-op since forever, and we just keep getting two-year agreements every year. Now, with, with football, because of, because of the way the numbers were, because there were a lot of kids on the team last year, CIAC said you are in a one-year phase-out, which means you got too many. You guys got to split this up somehow. You got one year to continue as you are, but at the end of this year, next year, you got to do something different. So that's where we are. Something different is going to happen.
So this year was our one year?
This year is, is our one-year phase-out, yeah. Yep. Thank you. You're welcome. Matt? You will have a football program next year, though. It'll just be. Well, Chappagh, there will not be a Chappagh football program. Right. There will. Some type of co-op with six. These, so, so these teams that are, that are, um, these schools that are in the program are fully planning to, to be in, in a football co-op next year. And I mean, I, I can say this, this is not a, a big secret. Chappagh is planning on going with Nanawog and Lakeview. That's not, that's not a secret. That's, that's, that's the plan as, as it stands right now. And I believe you guys have been told that, those football parents know. That, that's the plan going forward. Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks, Matt.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to consider and if appropriate, approve the field trip request to the Model U N Conference in Boston on April thirtieth through February second for twenty-twenty-five for grades nine through twelve. It's an annual trip. Did I say April? Very long trip. Thank you.
So moved.
So moved. Can I have a second? Uh, any discussion?
It's a great program. Absolutely wonderful program.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Excellent. Moving on. Uh, to consider and if appropriate, approve the field trip request at Quebec City, Quebec on February twentieth and February twenty-third for grades, uh, nine through twelve. I would love you to come on up, madame. Today, Quebec, you're madame.
Hi, Melinda Crell, and I teach in the world language department. This is maybe my thirteenth year at Chappagh. And in my time here, um, I'm looking to participate in a fifth trip to Quebec. So generally speaking, we offer it every other year, but things like COVID happened, um, that interrupt our lives. So I think I was here two years ago, and I asked for your approval, and you were generous, and you granted us that. And then we got hit with an Arctic blast while we were there. But anyway, we've learned to pivot, and, um, there have been some changes over time. Uh, every time we do a proposal, things look a little differently. One of the things since COVID is that there are no more host families than that last time, which meant that the kids were staying in a hotel, which meant I got less sleep. But, uh, we try to offer a variety of activities, so if any kids end up repeating their trip, and it sounds like some of them would like to do so, um, as they get into the upper levels and their French improves, there's still a variety there. So, uh, last time we, you know, with the Arctic blast, you remember, it was terribly cold here as well. Certain things got eliminated that we're going to reintroduce, like the tubing day after doing the hotels of glass. But then they told me that, uh, dog sledding would not happen unless, uh, the teachers took the kids and drove the dog sled each time. And that just seemed a little bit of a logistical nightmare, so we'd probably do curling this time instead. But without host families, the main message I would say, uh, I had for you is, uh, that, um, without that interaction with French-speaking families, I look to give them as many activities where they're interacting the target language. So this year, I asked if we could spend a morning at a local school, so they could interact with students. I asked if we could go back to an old activity where guided by professional actors, they meet in this small little amphitheater. And, um, they enact in French, um, some of the legends of Quebecois, uh, history. So those are the kinds of things that are on offer. It would be for, I pushed it back a little bit because one can't predict the weather, but I don't want to be with that severe cold against, we could go post-carnival, when it would still be very festive, but we'd have more opportunities to choose our hotel. Just looking at February twentieth through twenty-third. Typically, we leave on Thursday morning. We come back late Sunday night. The cost has gone up, which is to be expected since two years ago. But if you have any questions, but I'd be probably better off answering specific questions or any concerns, yeah.
Uh, how many students would be involved in this?
That depends. I have about fifty-five that are eligible. We, we decided to have it levels two, where they've had adequate introduction to the language instead of four or five. Um, all the way up through AP, so I did my numbers, and I'd say around fifty-five that would be eligible. Depending on how many enroll, uh, the price varies. So for a group of twenty to twenty-four, it would run almost fifteen hundred dollars. But the more that are, I think we had twenty-seven kids last time, and about, um, two parents and four faculty.
And what, what are you budgeting for this year?
Well, it's not a question of budget. We kind of hold a parent meeting. We see what kind of interest there is. We make them aware when we give them the handout. You know, depending on what our enrollment looks like, and you have a window in which you enroll, and you can see how many others enrolled, and I constantly communicate that to them. Uh, they have a gauge, a price gauge, and then there's a deadline at which the window's going to close. So by committing to, let's say, twenty kids enrolled, they know the price range is going to be such and such. And they can opt to stay in or opt out. It's a little bit of a difficult dance, but it'll really depend on the interest. The kids seem to want to go.
I, I'm, I'm showing my ignorance here. Do the families pay for part of this?
They pay for all of it, but.
Is it school supplement?
Some fundraising. Traditionally, the American Legion has been incredibly generous, so we do our spaghetti. I do that one. Do the spaghetti dinner, and they, they're so great. They let us keep all the monies, and that goes towards, I mean, when you have a big group, it only goes so far. Um, they've also been incredibly generous last year, uh, two years ago. They funded an entire scholarship. And then I let the parents take over the rest of it, and they have been very inventive. And then, uh, they can either fundraise for the group, or kids can do individualized fundraising where it goes for their account. But you're right, it costs a pretty penny, and, and we have to be inventive.
Has the school ever contributed to that?
Not to my knowledge. I'm thinking on my teeth, but, uh,
Thank you.
It is expensive.
I, I think it sounds like a fantastic opportunity to have real-world opportu- interaction, not just with the language, but with the culture. And my question really is, for French, we benefit from proximity to Quebec City. But for Spanish, are there any opportunities for students?
There have been in the past. Uh, we've had trips to Costa Rica. In fact, when Mike Nolan is here, he's the same promotor company. But that'll depend on, you know, whether or not the other faculty members are able to step forward, you know. Everybody's at a different stage. My kids are out of the house right now, so I hope for good, actually. Other than my husband and our dog, I can step away a little bit more easily than people who are raising little kids. So, you know, it, it depends on staffing and things like that, but you're absolutely right. That's something that we like to provide both with language learners.
Thank you.
Have, in the past, have you ever attempted to ask the school or ask the board to help fund, uh, some of this? Because, you know, I'm sure the numbers would be a lot higher. Uh, but for families who just can't afford it, um, I think it's a shame that they're turned away because, you know, no one is, you know, willing to help them out aside from the American Legion or whomever you, you do. Um, have you ever asked the school for help?
I haven't asked, so this is only going to be my second time that I've run it. I know that we've applied for grants before, uh, and had some success. But since COVID, the last time I applied for a, a grant, and I forget the institution, we weren't even acknowledged. And I don't know if it's because of COVID and they were just inundated. But, uh, if you think there's a proper way to go about that, I'm all in. I'm not aware of any, uh, funding that's made available for those purposes.
Nicole?
Yeah, Nicole.
Okay, you're the expert. Tell us.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm very sorry that we, we, they don't have the opportunity to go in with the families as they did in the past. My daughter went on, uh, one of my young, my younger daughter went on that, that trip. And that was an amazing part of the trip, was that interaction with the family. So I'm glad that you're doing other things to try to get something, but boy, is there any chance that that's ever going to come back?
I don't know. I begged and I pleaded and, and, you know, uh, I think they have two locations, Costa Rica being one of them, that they still have host families. Uh, and I think the other one was in Europe. But in general, uh, for whatever reason, uh, not just like the concerns that were associated with COVID, it's kind of shut down. So one can only hope. But like last time, you know, we work around it. Uh, when we did our museum tour, I made sure that the tour for the AP and the Level Four students was conducted uniquely in French. And, uh, you know, you make do, uh, when we sat down to dinner, I had our tour director, Lewis Luin, sit with the upper-level students, but it's not ideal. Anyhow.
Well, having the same experience with my daughter as well, being able to stay with the host family was really extraordinary and something that she still talks about. So it's a wonderful opportunity.
I know that I, and I won't interrupt you again, but I know that, uh, I had talked to the art teacher, and la- uh, last year, we thought, oh, we'll take the kids to Paris. And, um, we'll combine it with art and French, and then there were travel warnings.
Yeah.
Put that aside for the moment, but I've left my eye on that.
That's great, definitely. If you need a chaperone for that one, I'll sacrifice, I guess.
Yeah, that is amazing.
I mean, I guess I'll, I'll offer it up if you really need some. Yeah, thank you.
Any other worries or concerns?
No.
So can we have a motion, Greg?
Yes, I'll, I'll move that we approve, uh, the field trip request, uh, to Quebec City, Quebec February twenty-twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, grades nine and twelve.
Second? Mary? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Consider and if appropriate, establish June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five as the graduation date.
So we, we talked about this, obviously, last year when we put together the calendar. And so this is, I guess, an annual approval that you typically do. But I just wanted to point out, um, that we could approve that. We could have approved that last year, and it's done. And the reason I say that is because, um, you are, you have chosen Saturdays to, um, be your graduation date. Many districts do not do that. They also, many districts wait until April. Many districts do not do that. They also, many districts wait until April, right? Until they know there's, you know, enough snow days have gone by, we can, um, we can choose the date, and it's not a weekend because they usually, some go to Westpan or whatever. The reason I bring that up is there's a difference between if we, if we pick the date, like right here, it's flagged right on the calendar every year. It's already there. So that allows districts like us, um, if there are, say, eight snow days, and we've already picked a date in advance of the year, we, seniors do not have to make up those dates. Now, we do go one hundred and eighty-three days. We have that three-day leverage. But unlike other districts where that's not the case. So I think I just, it's just saving time. It's great that we're approving this, but I'm not sure why, because nothing changed between when we picked it last year. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
That just logically, we can pick it, we can put it on the calendar, it could be approved, and we're done. Now, is there ever a time when we come back together as a board and change the date? Possibly, but that would have to be extraordinary circumstances, right? So I just wanted to put that out, that you're all good when you pick that date so far in advance, and so are the seniors if we had, because if you recall, all districts were in an, had an issue. I was one of those, never picked the date in advance. And when we had the tornado, where we're at a week, and we had, I think it was fifteen full days out of, most districts were out of school. I couldn't understand why some districts weren't having an issue in some words because some picked the date in advance, and they didn't have to worry about the seniors not getting one hundred and eighty days. As long as you pick a date, you count one hundred and eighty days, you pick the date, which we did, we're good. Other districts weren't so lucky. So I just wanted to point that out. Once we do that, we don't have to come back and approve it again, if that makes sense to you.
Okay.
It's my understanding, though, seniors are invited to do that, finish their next few days.
They, they.
I don't believe anyone has ever taken a sophomore.
Yeah, yeah, and they certainly could come back for, you know, signing yearbooks and fun things, and, and many high schools do that, including, um, Chappag. But I just wanted to point that out as unnecessary, unnecessary task, right? But we have to approve it because that's what you do, so.
So we can have an unnecessary motion? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? I have an emotion to adjourn. Okay, we are out. Thank you.